The views and opinions expressed on the following program are not necessarily those of the staff and management of KLAY or those who advertise their products or services on this station.
Welcome to the 411 on 420. I'm Darryl Bowman, your business and IT professional in cannabis.
And I'm Amy Ansell, your cannabis partner strategist.
Hey, thanks for joining us today and every Saturday from noon to one when we talk about the business of cannabis with information and news you can use to make a decision to help you understand an always controversial and growing industry.
Yeah, I mean, how do you navigate all the different areas of this new budding industry?
Budding industry. I like that. Okay, hey, we are really, really excited about what we're doing here. We're actually taking on opportunities to discuss topics that, well, don't get often discussed in the mainstream media and they kind of overlooked and help you to understand something that you, well, as a public voted for to say, yes, we're going to go do this. And if you're not in this state of Washington, maybe you're somewhere else and you're thinking about, hey, what do we do to get our government, if you will, to move forward and change the law and/or how do we make it better? Well, we're hoping that we're bringing those conversations to you.
Right. We're putting a magnifying glass on the activity in, you know, Washington State and smaller regions such as Pierce County.
Well, I see shedding the light of pulling back the covers and putting, I don't know if the magnifying glass is on there.
Well, you know, it's like love is in the details and some of these details people need to know about. And if you're not going to hear about it from, you know, the alphabet stations, then you'll hear about it here.
That's a true statement. We are so excited to do some of the things that we're doing in interview. We have some really fantastic interviews we've already done and we're doing more, not only just today, but we have more in the pipeline and so forth. So make sure you put this on your subscriber podcast and so forth and visit us online at KLAY1180.com to check us out. Or you can go to 411on420.biz and get your information when you need it. And well, at any time, you can listen to our podcast and so forth.
On demand.
On demand. That's true. But hey, you know, one of the things that we really like to talk about is making sure that you are also thinking about your veterans, the people that made everything possible for what we do today. Those people that put their lives on the line, put their liberties on the line and helped us get the freedoms that we enjoy today. Those people deserve your attention.
They deserve a hand up, not a handout, a hand up and an opportunity.
So when we're talking about that, we're talking about jobs.
That's right.
Yeah, we're drawing down the military all around the country and so forth. And we're doing that big time where we're located. And I'm sure your community, wherever it is, is drawing down that as well. So you're getting more people every day leaving the military, not only from a veteran perspective, you know, that are just leaving the military, but also we're drawing down the government contractors and so forth, who at many times are veterans themselves and they're needing to integrate, reintegrate into the mainstream society outside of government to get those jobs. And they have skillsets and they've been helping us to run our nation's infrastructure for a very long time. And we need to help support those individuals because they have been supporting us and giving us what we need.
And you said skillsets, but let's, let's add mad skillsets. We're talking about respect, honor, a code that is ingrained in them that, you know, I love being around vets. There's an energy to them that you just, you can't explain.
They get stuff done.
They do get done. And okay, I'll say it again, love is in the details and they love every detail and they will hold that in the highest regard, whatever it is. So I think we're suggesting to consider a pretty amazing community.
So it doesn't really matter what it is that you are doing, what kind of, what kind of job skill you, you need, what kind of industry you are in or anything like that. And the diversity is such a plethora of opportunity because we're not talking about any one different community. We're talking about the people that make up our society from all walks of life and those individuals share a common bond and they can bring that to you and help you grow your company, grow your industry in ways that you really haven't thought of before.
That's right. They, they know what teamwork means. They know. They understand and they live by team.
They do. They do. And you know, for those people that have decided, you know what, I can't wait for that opportunity to do that. They went out and they've done one more thing. They've decided to start their own company. And when they started their own company, they decided to sacrifice yet again because boy, as an entrepreneur, I'll tell you right now.
It's patriotic.
It's patriotic. You really need to put a handle on it, if you will, to do what you need to do to start a new business and spend all your time, well, creating an income for yourself, but also generating a income for the community in and around yourself because you don't just work alone. You impact other people and other businesses. So it has a direct and indirect cost in your community. When, when a veteran starts a business and says, I'm going to locate right here. So we need to, what we need to do is support those individuals and say, hey, I'd like to see what I can do to help use your business and grow my business. Or hey, if I just need you for a service, if you wanted, you know, car repair, you know, house cleaning, maintenance, construction, there are just untold businesses out there and you can find them on the Department of Veterans Affairs website. Just go there and look at the, well, certified veteran owned businesses and it doesn't matter what you're looking for, you'll find one in your community.
That's right. And there's a lot of corporations out there that are really big advocates of veterans. And so there's workshops.
We applaud every one of them for what they do.
We absolutely do. And Darryl and I, we really enjoy meeting up to discuss the show. And down here off 512, there's a fantastic resource for veterans and families that we definitely want to shed some light on.
So hey, whatever you're doing out there, think about your nation's veterans and so forth, because those individuals are the ones that we love and adore because without them, nothing would be possible for what we do. A lot of people say we'd be speaking a different language and we'd be, you know, operating in a completely different liberty and, well, different context altogether.
Right.
Given the history of our country and so forth, I think that that's important that we continue to be the patriots that we are and to support those people that have supported us.
I couldn't agree more, Darryl.
So hey, thanks again. And what we want to do is talk about our guest. Our guest today is Derek Young. He is a Pierce County Councilman. He comes from the Gig Harbor Peninsula area, former councilman over there. And he is talking to us today about the I-502 Initiative 502, the recreational marijuana law and how Pierce County has implemented a ban on that.
What? A ban?
Yeah, they banned the operation of businesses that had licenses to operate in there so that they could figure out how they wanted to deal with that. And we're going to understand more of why they did that. And then when they're lifting that ban, what they're doing to lift that ban, because I hear that's coming down the pipe as well.
Yeah, I think it's really good just to know and understand what is going on around us in our communities. So this is going to be a very interesting conversation.
It should be. So anyway, when we come back after these short messages, we'll be talking with Derek Young, Pierce County Councilman. I'm Darryl Bowman, your business and IT professional in cannabis.
And I'm Amy Ansell, your cannabis partner strategist.
We'll be right back.
AimBiz.com brings you the life of a business website. The majority of business websites can't be found by search engines, so their owners lose customers and money. An Aim Business website wins new customers on Google and Facebook. Imagine your website with great content management and integrated blog, clean designs and clear messages. To top it off, at AimBiz.com, you get a free website design mockup before you ever spend a dime. For more information, go to AimBiz.com. That's A-I-M-B-I-Z dot com.
Swettman Young is proud to celebrate 25 years of construction service throughout South Puget Sound, working together with you to guarantee your satisfaction and offer you a unique two-year warranty on all work. Let Swettman Young build your new dream home, remodel your existing home, add an additional deck, outdoor kitchen, a man cave, or even preserve your historic home. Swettman Young provides the best construction value in South Puget Sound. Visit SwettmanYoung.com today and schedule your free consultation with Bill Swettman, your personal professional contractor.
Ever get a traffic ticket? Had a bill you couldn't collect? Had a contract you needed advice about, such as a new insurance plan, home or car loan? We run into these situations routinely throughout our lives. We know we need legal advice, but feel we just can't afford hiring an expensive attorney to help. Legal Shield and your legal team is now your affordable option, allowing each of us to rest assured we can quickly get the help we need for one low monthly fee. Whether it's business or personal legal advice, visit yourlegalteam.info today.
Welcome back to the 411 on 420. I'm Darryl Bowman, your business and technical advisor in cannabis.
And I'm Amy Ansell, your cannabis partner strategist.
Hey, thanks again for joining us today and every Saturday from noon to one when we talk about the business of cannabis, so you can make great decisions with news and information you can use. We are here today with Derek Young, Pierce County Councilman. He is serving out in the Gig Harbor District and he is talking to us today about the things that are going on with the law and how it is being impacted within Pierce County and the ban. I mean, we have a ban on the operation of, since 502, the businesses that have applied for their licenses and so forth. So welcome, Derek. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Hey, tell us a little bit about how you came to become a councilman and what got you started. Why'd you, why'd you even, you know, get there?
Sure. So although I'm, I'm new to the county council this last year, I'm not new to local government. I spent 16 years on the city council until basically 2014 and decided to run for the county council the following year and ended up winning. So here I am.
So you like government?
You know, I like good government. I'll put it that way.
Oh, that's a good thing. I mean, I followed your career a little bit, watching you think the things that are going on over there in the peninsula and so forth. And you've been a pretty good advocate for the people and the things that are going on to make everybody kind of middle of the road.
You know, I do come from sort of a middle of the road position. I like to point out to folks that I was, I'm a Democrat. That's, you know, it's a partisan position, although I used to be a Republican. So I speak both languages.
That's an interesting comment. I'm a D R, I'm a doctor.
I kind of, actually I like that because it's all about harmonizing.
Yeah. Well, and you know, in local government, I mean, the stuff we do is not supposed to be partisan. You know, it's making sure your roads are built and making sure you have proper land use and protect our environment. That's not a, those aren't, you know, partisan issues. You know, so I try to leave a lot of that for Olympia and Congress and, you know, let them have those partisan debates. I try to find a way to make sure we govern.
Well, these are our local communities and it's really right down and up close and personal. You're not talking about a vast majority of people, like say a congressman or a senator, where there's a huge state and millions upon millions of people that you may be representing. We're talking about maybe tens of thousands of people versus millions.
Absolutely. You know, so a lot of my constituents I know personally or my friends and, you know, folks that disagree with me, I, you know, I talk to on a regular basis. But also, and you know, I think this is the important part is local government has the biggest impact on your life. You know, you could go years without having something that Congress does really affecting you directly. But on a daily basis, the way our communities are shaped and, and you know, the services we get, that's where, you know, local government is at. And so, you know, it's important that we get it right.
You know what? I commend you for being agreeable and disagreeable without being disagreeable. I mean, when I say that, disagreeing without being disagreeable because we really have to get to, we have to get to that point where we're not argumentative and so forth, which is interesting because what we're talking about today is a very controversial subject and so forth. And the people voted to pass Initiative 502, which legalized recreational marijuana in the state of Washington. And then several cities and counties, Pierce County is one, unincorporated Pierce County and the city of Lakewood and other cities throughout the state of Washington decided to say, you know what, we're going to ban that operation. So you, even though the majority of the people within the state of Washington voted to say yes, and quite possibly the majority of the people in each of those constituent areas voted to say, yes, let's go ahead and do that. Those local governments chose to implement a ban for reasons that, well, we're here to understand.
Sure. And, and you know, I think it's, it's worth noting that my own community in Gig Harbor, the city, actually after I left the city council, decided to ban it. Whereas when I was on the council, we actually passed a zoning ordinance and, you know, we're going to allow it.
Set yourself up for it.
Yeah. It was, you know, part of the thing and, and you know, with due respect to this, some of the cities, you know, the county was the first to pass a prohibition. And for the most part, you know, we have a huge unincorporated area in Pierce County, unlike most counties where the bulk of the population lives in cities. In this case, a lot of folks live in unincorporated Pierce County. And when the county banned, it put a lot of pressure on the cities because they're like, well, why should I take this if, you know, the county is saying there's something wrong here? So I think that made, you know, put some pressure on them to, to make a similar choice. So in some respects, I understand their decision.
How many districts are we talking about within a county?
There's seven council districts.
Seven council districts. And how, and so voting wise, of those districts, how did that, how did the vote for Initiative 502 come out?
It passed in each district.
In each district and all precinct by precinct probably?
By precinct, it's the vast majority of them. You know, there, there were a number of precincts where it failed. But I mean, we're talking, you know.
Minority.
Yeah, a very small minority. In fact, that's one of the fascinating things about this measure is that unlike a lot of measures where you can see a deep, you know, liberal, conservative, rural, urban, you know, suburban divide, it actually passed all over the place. You know, rural areas, urban areas. And so there wasn't just, you know, a, a sort of...
Us versus them and rural versus urban?
Exactly. I mean, this passed in every council precinct and it passed in rural areas. It passed in unincorporated urban areas. It passed in almost every city.
And that's pretty much across the state as well, right? I mean, not just the Pierce County, but entirely across the state.
Yeah. If you look at the county by county map, it's actually, again, very extraordinary where you don't have that normal east versus west divide. It was, it was pretty popular everywhere. So, you know, I took that to meaning, you know, whatever you thought about the merits of the case. And I understand that there's folks that are against it.
Obviously, because otherwise it would have been a unanimous decision.
Yeah, exactly. And we rarely get those, but this passed pretty overwhelmingly. And so in local government, you know, when you have an initiative, the voters are acting as the legislature. And just as, you know, even we can, you know, in local government sometimes get frustrated by things that the legislature does to us, we're still obligated in local government to follow what they tell us to do. And it's our job to implement it. And so regardless of your feelings on the subject and your personal views on, you know, recreational or medicinal use of marijuana, we have a task and, and it's our job in local government to make it work. And so from my perspective, you know, I think that's to replace the unregulated, unlicensed, untaxed market with a regulated license and tax market.
The big, the black market is what you're talking about is where, you know, we're trying to get rid of that. So we can actually get, one, we voted to tax it. So and probably one of the biggest reasons that it actually passed all the way across is that the taxation opportunity and, and the law itself had some huge taxes written into it, which most people believe where those taxes were implemented by the government, where they weren't. They were actually implemented by the initiative itself. So that 20, 75%, whereas 25, 25 and 25 for the grower, the producer and the retailer, that was really a grower, the processor and the retailer, I apologize. And then there was a sales tax on top of that. So when you think about all those taxes on top of it, those were actually implemented by the people who wrote the initiative. And so now those taxes are, have been, after a year or so, they've been reduced by the legislature and saying, okay, I read in the paper just recently, actually this morning, that the prices for the regulated recreational area went from, from $30 because of the high taxation down to $10 a gram, which is actually competitive with the black market really.
You know, and I would actually, one, one thing I would, I would, I think has been confused a little bit because of the way that it was originally written. It was a value added tax, which we're not used to in the United States. It was actually a very European style tax system, which was, I thought, almost a clever way of doing things because it adds that, it added that 25% at each level. So the cumulative effect has actually net what you have now at 37%.
Right. 37%. Right.
So yeah, it didn't add on, you know, at each, basically it adds on at each level. And the result was the tax should be about the same, you know, even though they consolidated into one. What I think has really impacted the market is that the supply really completely changed compared to what people thought it was going to be. The production has been much, much larger. And, you know, it turns out economics works even in the marijuana market.
Go figure, supply and demand.
Yeah. You know, and not to mention the fact that, you know, there is a criminal premium that, you know, you're not going to go out and, and break the law without demanding a pretty high profit margin. For folks that are in the legal, you know, white hat world, you know, you can trim down your margins, but even at the larger margins I hear some of these businesses are at, they're able just to flat out compete the, the black market. And so to me, I mean, and that's really where this gets attractive to me because I would much rather the, you know, folks at my local chamber commerce or rotary be, you know, getting the profits than, you know, street dealers and cartels.
And actually, and then benefiting the community because there's that part where the black market doesn't do anything. And then we're talking about, it doesn't do anything for the community other than take a strain on it with regards to our law enforcement and so forth, where here we get to, in, well, add value to that whole community with the tax dollars.
Absolutely. You know, one thing I tell folks is that, you know, when I first got in office, I mean, this wasn't the reason I ran and there was other things I wanted to do.
I'm sure there were more things on the platform.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I was very open about the fact that I, I thought it was a mistake that the county council decided to ban it. I ran very openly that, you know, this was something I was going to do. But it wasn't going to be the first thing I did. But in February, the second largest grow operation, illegal grow operation in the county's history was busted in Gig Harbor, was next door to a daycare center. And I was furious because the way I was looking at is we're supposed to have this legal market. We're supposed to, you know, be bringing this into the, you know, the world away from criminals.
And now you're encouraging the other.
Exactly. And because, their only reason for an illegal group operation to exist these days is to serve that black market that Pierce County was encouraging. So basically by the council's actions, the way I looked at it is that they were, you know, basically moving a violent cartel in next door to a daycare center in my community.
And this is confusing to me because I didn't even really understand how there could be a ban. The state voted, the state is legal, so why not honor?
What's the reasoning?
Right. What's the reason for the ban? And I also would like to understand, you know, there's the medicinal psychotropic element of cannabis, but then there's this whole new realm of industrial use for it. The plastics and, you know, all these different efficacious things that you can do for it. So how does this ban nurture anybody?
You know, to get to your first question on, on what was the reasoning, it was kind of interesting because my Republican colleagues basically asserted a obligation to enforce federal law. And still under federal law, you know, it's a schedule one drug, sort of absurdly so, because if you look at what defines a schedule one drug, it doesn't meet that definition. But Congress hasn't changed that.
Well, for people that don't understand what a schedule one, schedule two and schedule three are, can you understand, can you enlighten us?
Yeah. So schedule one basically is that, one, it can't have any medical purpose. Two, it has to be addictive. And three, it has to be dangerous. And now it, to give you a little perspective on how, yeah, exactly. I mean, it's, it...
That's unbelievable. It doesn't meet any of that criteria.
So checklist, checklist, checklist. We didn't meet any of that. And that's all scientifically proven. So we don't have to jump on that.
Well, and to show you sort of how absurd that is, if you look at schedule two, which are legal and, and, you know, at least in terms of the, the federal law, methamphetamines and cocaine are both scheduled two drugs, meaning that they do have...
Are you kidding me?
Yeah. So that, that's basically the way the...
Learning something new every day.
I am learning a lot today.
Yeah. So it's unusual for conservatives to assert an obligation to enforce federal law anyway, because, you know, at the very root of federalism is that you'll have two different levels of government. It's that you'll have the states that can pass and enforce their laws and, you know, the federal government, which can pass and enforce its laws. The federal government can't commandeer local governments and state governments to enforce their law for them. In fact, this has been upheld in a number of, you know, conservative Supreme Court decisions. Scalia wrote the opinion on the Brady Bill repealing a number of sections from it that basically used local government to enforce some gun control laws. And most recently in the famous Obamacare case, you know, where they said you couldn't even use Medicaid to encourage state governments to pass these, you know, so-called state mandate because that was too coercive. And so, you know, here you have a situation where normally this is an argument that is made by conservatives to say, you know, we won't, we won't obligate ourselves to enforce your law. Now, the federal government is free to at any time come in and enforce what they want. But, you know, oftentimes we call...
They've already made their position, but they've already made their position clear across the US that they're not doing, enforcing those laws in a, in a manner that is against the state's wills.
Yeah. So, so far they've kind of taken a position where it's, we want to see how this works. You know, and we often call states the laboratory of democracy because they'll let, you know, states try something new. And if it works, you know, we bring it across the entire nation, either at the state level or the federal.
Sounds like gay marriage.
Exactly. That, that's exactly how it started because at some point, you know, the courts can't ignore, you know, that a number of states are doing this. And so you have to say, okay, how are we going to deal with this at the, at the national level? And so, you know, they made it clear that, you know, with two different directions. One on the, the new legal, you know, 502 market, we got instructions from the, or I guess, you know, direction from the US attorney for Washington that said, you know, we don't want this escaping your state, but we do want to see, you know, want to see how this goes. The second thing is that the VA was actually, a bill passed by Congress is allowed to now allow it for medicinal use. And so...
Treat post traumatic stress and so forth.
Exactly. So, so on a number of levels, Congress is relaxing their position. So, you know, to assert...
Well, let's take a break and come back after these short messages. We'll talk more about why the county council has decided to buck the trend of the voters. I'm Darryl Bowman, your IT and business professional in cannabis.
I'm Amy Ansell, your partner strategist in cannabis.
We'll be right back after these short messages.
AimBiz.com brings you the life of a business website. The majority of business websites can't be found by search engines, so their owners lose customers and money. An Aim Business website wins new customers on Google and Facebook. Imagine your website with great content management and integrated blog, clean designs and clear messages. To top it off, at AimBiz.com, you get a free website design mockup before you ever spend a dime. For more information, go to AimBiz.com. That's A-I-M-B-I-Z dot com.
Swettman Young is proud to celebrate 25 years of construction service throughout South Puget Sound, working together with you to guarantee your satisfaction and offer you a unique two-year warranty on all work. Let Swettman Young build your new dream home, remodel your existing home, add an additional deck, outdoor kitchen, a man cave, or even preserve your historic home. Swettman Young provides the best construction value in South Puget Sound. Visit SwettmanYoung.com today and schedule your free consultation with Bill Swettman, your personal professional contractor.
Ever get a traffic ticket? Had a bill you couldn't collect? Had a contract you needed advice about, such as a new insurance plan, home or car loan? We run into these situations routinely throughout our lives. We know we need legal advice, but feel we just can't afford hiring an expensive attorney to help. Legal Shield and your legal team is now your affordable option, allowing each of us to rest assured we can quickly get the help we need for one low monthly fee. Whether it's business or personal legal advice, visit yourlegalteam.info today.
Welcome back to the, to the 411 on 420. I'm Darryl Bowman, your business and IT professional.
And I'm Amy Ansell, your partner strategist in cannabis.
Hey, thanks for joining us. We are here with Derek Young and we are talking a Pierce County Councilman and we're talking about an imposed ban on the sale and growth and production of marijuana recreationally in unincorporated Pierce County. And we were just talking about all the different ways that it was being kind of a duck and cover for the, using federal law to justify a ban locally. But what we didn't really have an opportunity to talk about was there's a proliferation, if you will, of medicinal marijuana shops all the way throughout the unincorporated Pierce County, which seemed to fly in the face of that exact ban.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that was really strange about Pierce County is that while on the one hand, they thwarted the will of the voters on, on 502, they were also, you know, allowing for the proliferation of these stores, often clearly in violation of state law. And which state law, by the way, we're obligated to follow and to enforce.
Isn't that an interesting dichotomy?
Yeah. It was, it was really strange. It's an example, in my community, there is a dispensary that is within the thousand foot rule of Peninsula High School. And I just looked at this, I drive by it all the time. I tutor math class there and I would, I would drive by it and think, you know, this is completely inside out. What the, what the public wanted was to create a safe, legal...
Transparency.
Yeah, exactly. And instead we have this sort of, you know, gray market is the way I would describe it. You know, they were legal-ish, is probably the best way to put it, but they certainly weren't well regulated. And I think that to me is the important thing because, you know, despite the fact that, that, you know, I think most people said, we think, you know, adults should be able to have access to this and people in medical needs should have access to it. We certainly didn't want kids, you know, being able to purchase it without, you know, you know, much oversight and...
Well, Initiative 502 gave the regulations and, and tells people that what they're getting... Well, Initiative 502 gave the regulations and tells people that what they're getting and what they're buying and on all the different health aspects and so forth. So you know what the strength is, what the amount is, you know, what's in it. You can really trust that what can't, what, what you're going to quote unquote ingest is actually something that isn't as harmful as it could be if it was unregulated, unregulated like you talk about.
Exactly. And you know, I, I actually think, so, you know, we probably wouldn't be here today if it weren't for that, that original initiative back in what, 2000 or whatever, that, that allowed for the growth of the medical market. And so to a degree, it was necessary to set this up, but it wasn't a perfect system. You know, I've talked.
You have to start somewhere.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere. And, you know, I've talked to doctor friends who said, you know, I would prescribe this to some of my patients, but, you know, in the current system, I can't trust it. Because, you know, if you've got somebody that has, you know, immunological, what's the word I'm looking for?
Immunological.
Yeah, exactly. If, if their, if their immune system is compromised or if there's something in it that I don't know about, a pesticide or a fungus, you know, it could be seriously dangerous for them. You know, and so for, for him, he was like, I need it to be more like a, you know, a regular.
Exactly, exactly. And you know, the interesting thing about what's going on here with the change in the law, we interviewed Rick Garza a few weeks ago from the Washington State Liquor Cannabis Board and they're implementing 220-some-odd additional, excuse me, retail outlets. And many of those are going to be medicinally authorized. They're going to be authorized because in order to sell from a, in your store, you have to be authorized as a medicinal store, which means that you have to have somebody that actually knows what the heck they're talking about when it comes to prescriptions and so forth. You can't just have somebody look at the current environment today, which, no offense to the people that are out there that are doing a very laudable job to actually help patients and so forth. But there is a number of people out there that are really just skirting along, making money, if you will, by saying, hey, you've got a prescription or a medical marijuana card, fantastic. Well, then here, why don't you buy this?
Or the production side. I mean, that, that I think is the really important place where the, the regulations come in handy is, is that, you know, you can track the origin. So, you know, just to give another public health, you know, I sit on their, our.
Health board?
Our health board, exactly. And, you know, to give you another public health analogy is that you've heard, you know, about the Chipotle, you know, E. coli outbreak. So one of the ways that public health can kick in when there is a problem is that they can track, you know, the, the, the sources of the ingredients, so to speak. So if there is a batch that comes out that's got a problem, you know, there's, there's something in it that is causing issues or it's stronger than it should be or, or whatever. They can track that down and correct the problem. And I think that's really important because, you know, knowing, I mean, we take this for, for granted as a consumer culture, but for the consumer, knowing what you're getting is an important part of the market.
You know, it flies in the face of all these people who say, well, I don't want the government involved. But you know what? The government's been involved. It's the FDA and the.
To protect and serve.
Well, actually the food and drug is when we're talking about the fact that, you know, you, you're tracing that meat back to where the, where the farm was and, and how it produced and so forth. So you can correct that problem all the way back to the cow. And here.
And I want to be protected in that manner.
Exactly. So it's really not government control. It's protection and consumerism, if you will. So that we have, so that we're health-conscious about that. And I'm sure that everybody really wants that.
Right. Not only to protect our health, but to protect our tax dollars.
Well, yeah, thinking about tax dollars and so forth.
This must have been a free initiative for a free vote? Is that how it is?
Well, there's a, there's a lot of taxes that are collected to that. We talked about that earlier about the number of taxes that are being collected. But with the ban, that doesn't mean you're collecting any.
Was the ban free?
You know, it's interesting because originally the initiative, and, and this is one criticism I would have for the way it was drafted, is it didn't have any share for local government. And we're the ones that are usually tasked with enforcing on it. So that was a little frustrating. And, and if you look at going back to, you know, make an analogy on alcohol, one of the reasons for the formation of the Association of Washington Cities was to go get after prohibition, some of the revenue from liquor. And we've actually funded local government for a number of years from that. So.
So what's changed? I believe there are some taxes that are going to be allocated appropriately around the table.
So this year, the legislature did a couple of things. First, as we talked about, they, they changed the tax structure, consolidated the, the medical market into 502. And then they also swept a lot of the revenue into the general fund to help pay for a number of things. But part of it was a local share. It's a small amount comparatively. You know, it's $12 million or something ultimately statewide. But that's not small, you know, that's not chump change for a lot of local governments that are struggling. And one of the criteria is that in order to collect that revenue, you have to allow for it in your jurisdiction, which makes sense.
Is it based on the amount of sale in that jurisdiction or is it based on population or how is it distributed?
Like anything the legislature does, it's a little bit of a complicated formula. A portion of it is, is point of sale, sort of, you know, if you shop at Target in your community, that, that.
Some of that money comes back in your community.
Exactly. But then there's also a per capita distribution to make sure that not all of it is distributed just where you buy it, but also where.
Otherwise it'll all be going to Seattle.
Yeah, actually, King County gets a huge share of it. But as, and it's also split out on a 60/40 basis, I think, between cities and counties. So the county itself would actually stand to raise a substantial amount.